Councilmember Harris has our prayer and pledge tonight. Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you as humble as we know how. We come to you just to say thank you for blessing us, just to be present today. Bless the sick, the shut-in, the hungry, and thank you for blessing us to live in a great city. Thank you for blessing us with great schools, great students, and thank you for blessing us to live in a city where you have allowed the state champions in basketball, Oakland High School students. Bless them to stay focused, and, Lord, let them know that they do have a purpose in life, and as they grow, to learn to volunteer and give back to their community. And, Lord, we want to thank you for their principal, who is retiring. Mrs. Vick, may her retirement be blessed, and may she just enjoy the rest of her life. And as we begin to partake of the business tonight, Lord, we just ask that you move among us in the middle and direct our steps. And, Lord, last but not least, we want to thank you as a council in the city of Murfreesboro for giving us a mayor for the last 12 years, who has been faithful, who has had a vision. And, Lord, we ask that you bless him as he opens, closes this chapter, and opens other chapters in his life, continue to bless his family, and we just can't bless you enough for Mayor Bragg. This is our prayer we ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, April 24, 2014. And I'll ask Vice Mayor Washington, if he will, to take the chair. Well, councilmembers, you've picked a special night to be here tonight. And to all our audience, as I always say, we're so glad that you have come to City Hall, and you don't have pitchforks and torches. But this is a special occasion, and there are some special members of our community who we would like to salute tonight. And I am going to start with the Blackman Boys Basketball Team, and I'm going to ask them and their coach, please, to step up here to the podium with me, and let's give them a little bit of recognition. If y'all would please come on up. Everybody on the TV wants to see you now. I'm sure that we possibly have some parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles, cousins, siblings, others who are with the basketball team. So if you are a family member here, or just a special person here to be with these basketball players, would you please stand and be recognized? Do we have some other family members here? It's a special occasion when a mayor, just before he's going out of office, gets to recognize state champions, and even probably should be considered for national champions, I think. This is a tremendous accomplishment for Coach Barry Wurtman, the Tennessee Boys Basketball Coach of the Year. The Blackman Boys Basketball Team, 28-6, won District 7 AAA's championship, won the T double S double A State Boys Basketball Championship, and I'm sure you're just tired of hearing all these accolades, but the first Rutherford County school to win the boys' state championship since I was in high school. So let's hope it's not another forty-nine years before you win again. But you're all winners. Our city council is particularly proud of you. Our residents cannot show you enough respect for your accomplishments and what you've done. And I have put together a Blackman Blaze Day proclamation for you, and I ask all of our citizens, on behalf of our city council, to honor you and to encourage them to join in recognizing and honoring the significant contributions, visibility, and notoriety that your team and your coaches have brought to our city. Congratulations. Okay, for those of you who are wondering, the boys' state basketball trophy looks like that. When I was in high school, it wasn't nearly that big. So we're particularly proud that you did it, and you got to play and win in Murfreesboro. Our team had to go to Memphis to play. So we got a road trip, you guys didn't. But thank you for winning anyway. We're proud you're here. We should be celebrated. Thank you. Thanks very much. Again, it's a special occasion because at this time, we have the Blackman Cheer Squad. And are they here? Would you please join me at the podium? Goodness gracious, look how many. And I'm sure we have some parents with these handsome and terrific-looking folks. So if the parents and siblings and those who are here, would you please stand and be recognized at this time? Okay? We've got you. Now, where is Coach Heather? Heather, congratulations. What a tremendous accomplishment. I'm going to read a few of these, so it might take a little while. Coach Heather Wurtman, the Blackman High School cheerleading squad won the T double S double A state championship. They won the National High School Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida, and this is the third national championship that these folks have won in four years. And while everyone is standing for you, Heather, would you come over here? And I have a proclamation, again on Blackman Blaze Day, for this cheerleading squad. Now, which one of these trophies is yours?
The middle one.
The big, tall one in the middle. All right. And then everybody wore their jacket, their outfit. How very nice to have that. What a great memento. I still have my dad's letter jacket from MTSU from 1940. So your kids, and maybe your kids' kids, will want to take care of those things, so you look out for them and keep them clean, okay? This is a tremendous accomplishment, and on behalf of our city council, we proclaim today Blackman Blaze Day and encourage all of our citizens to join in recognizing and honoring the significant contributions, visibility, and notoriety this team and its coaches have brought to our city. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Very, very nice. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, while they're taking their seats, you're not going to believe this, but there is somebody else from Blackman High School that needs to be honored at the same time, and it is the Blackman Girls Basketball Team. So we've got the girls' basketball team. Chad? Tommy Bragg. How are you? Glad to have you. Thanks, dear. And how about some parents of this group? Would you please stand and be recognized if you're here? We all know how much support and dedication parents have in making sure that we do the right thing, right? And one of these days, you're going to be just like your parents and make sure your kids and the kids around you do the right thing. But let me read these accomplishments. This handsome young fella right here, who I have to look up to, Blackman's Girls Basketball was 34-1. And I believe you avenged that one loss, did you not? Coach Hibden, Chad Hibden, is the USA Today National High School Girls Basketball Coach of the Year and Tennessean Girls Basketball Coach of the Year. Quite an accomplishment. This talented group of young ladies, under the supervision of this handsome young fellow and maybe somebody else back there, right? Somebody had to rule... Somebody had to rule the roost, right? They won the District 7 AAA championship. They won the Region 4 AAA championship. They won the T double S double A State Girls Basketball Championship. They were ranked number one in USA Today's Super 25 Girls Basketball. They were ranked number one in Max Prep's Excellent Top 25 Girls Basketball. They were ranked number one in ESPNW's Power Rankings for Girls Basketball, the first Rutherford County school to be ranked number one in all three national polls. Congratulations. What a tremendous accomplishment. Now, while everyone is standing, because these folks need to be respected, I have another proclamation I want to present on behalf of our entire city council, proclaiming April 24th is Blackman Blaze Day, and also in Murfreesboro, encouraging all our citizens to join in recognizing and honoring these significant contributions, the visibility and notoriety the team and its coaches have brought to our city. Congratulations, Barry. Thank you. Really tremendous. Very nice. Thank you all for being here. I want to thank all these team members and their parents and their coaches and the administrators, because, as we know, it takes a village. Everybody's got to accomplish and work together. So we all share your accomplishment, but you all did it individually and as a team, and we certainly appreciate that. Before I step back up on the dice, I would like to ask somebody named Gail Vick to come forward, please, just for a few minutes, and be recognized. Come on now. Gail grew up in Robertson County. That is northwest of Nashville. It's on the other side going that way, isn't it? She graduated from Springfield High School, where she competed on the girls' basketball team. She continued her athletic career in sports at...
Austin Peay State University.
Let's go P. Let's go P. Austin Peay State University, where she earned a bachelor's degree in mathematics in 1975. She later added a master's degree in education from Austin Peay in 1982, followed by educational specialist degree in supervision and administration from MTSU in 1987. She began teaching at the Clarksville Academy. She coached girls' varsity basketball at a private K-12 school, and after that, she moved back to Robertson County to teach math and coach junior high basketball for five years before transferring smartly done in 1982 to Riverdale High School, where she was promoted to assistant principal in '88. And she has served at Riverdale until transferring to Blackman High School in 2000. Another good choice. And was named the school's second principal in 2004. She has decided, like the mayor, to retire. And so I am so proud of her, and our city council is so proud of you, that we want to give you a proclamation for you being a dedicated educator of 39 years. And because of your desire to see students succeed both academically and athletically, you have made Blackman High School a successful learning institution, and you are deserving of this recognition. So on behalf of our council, I want to proclaim today, as well as Blackman Blaze Day, a day to honor Ms. Gail Vick and ask all of our citizens to join me in this well-deserved recognition. Congratulations. You're really proud of you. Surprise, surprise, surprise. You might want to say a little something. We're proud of you. Thank you. What a wonderful day for our community. And I believe Mr. Lyons has a little something he wants to do. Is that right, Mr. Lyons?
Mayor, come up here and join me, please. Preparing the agenda is a city manager's, one of their main responsibilities, and as I began to prepare this week's agenda, I realized this was going to be your last agenda and presiding over this council as mayor. And, you know, Mayor, I can remember your first council meeting. Agenda looked much like tonight. We get to the consent agenda, the mayor says call the roll, approved. Item number two, approved. Item number three, approved. Item number four, approved. He said, "Well, there's nothing to this." And you said, "This is pretty easy." And I said, "Well, Mayor, the job of mayor is not easy," but you made it look easy. And on behalf of your leadership team, we wanted to give you a little something tonight. And thank you for your service. Your father served this community proudly and ably, and he did it because he loved this community, and the apple does not fall far from the tree. Just like your dad, you've served this community because you love it, and you love its people and you love its neighborhood, and we couldn't be more proud to work for you, Mayor. So on behalf of your leadership team, we'd like to present this to you.
Oh, boy, thank you. How wonderful. Mr. Lyons, it has been my pleasure to serve with you. As you know, our council selected you to be our city manager in 2009. We were presented with a very difficult choice, but you made it easy, and we appreciate your service also. It's been my pleasure to serve with these council members, and Beth O'Brien and Bill Shacklet, who are on the council also, and I may have left some others out, but I am just absolutely thrilled for our city. I always try to tell everybody, our finances are in good shape, our city budget is in good shape, our pension fund is in good shape, so don't worry about the city. We've got excellent council members, we've got an excellent new mayor-elect, and we're really looking forward to the future and more of the good things here. And thanks so much for making me look so good for so many years.
Thank you. I believe there's one other person that needs a public acknowledgement, and that is Ms. June Bragg, who is here.
Oh.
Bragg, we'd like to thank you for sharing Tommy...
Sheeney! I did not know you were there. That poor little girl, she's had to deal with me for 12 years in every phone call and every email. So thank you. Today, writing over here, she said, "Why are you so quiet?" And I still haven't answered that yet, but anyway, thank you very much, and I'm very pleased and very proud. All right, those of you who are here for proclamations and recognition, you're free to go or free to stay. Oh, wait a minute. Mr. Smotherman, just a minute. I'm sorry. If you'll wait just a second, Mr. Smotherman has something to say. Mr. Smotherman?
Just very briefly, I want to personally acknowledge the fact of what has been accomplished at Blackman High School in the last couple of years. And when I got on the council a couple of years ago, I know that these guys got tired of hearing me talk about Blackman High School, because my son was playing quarterback at the time, and Chris Lilly's son was catching those footballs out there. And it's a fantastic school, but not only preparing the students for athletics, you're also preparing them for life, and I can acknowledge that for firsthand experience, that Mrs. Vick and her staff has done a phenomenal job of not only preparing them athletically, but preparing them academically. And I think that's the most important thing that they can possibly do. And I personally want to say congratulations to each one of you.
You don't have to take the trophies with you. Oh. Yes, I understand. Always got to do what the boss says. Councilmembers, I'd like to also acknowledge Shannon Logan's work in putting all this together, and also our city engineer, Chris Griffith, who has a child at Blackman High School, I think, who was instrumental in making sure we got these recognitions done tonight. So I acknowledge both of their roles and the hard work that they put together in making this evening happen for us. I also would like to welcome Mr. Rick LaLance tonight, who is council member-elect, and happy that you are here, and I believe Mr. Phil King was here, at least earlier, who is a school board member-elect. So I want to acknowledge your presence and thank you for being here tonight. As we go on now with our council agenda and begin with our consent agenda, which is before you. Councilmembers, if you have any questions or comments regarding any of the items on the consent agenda, now would be a good time to bring those up. And if not, I'll accept a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Vice Mayor Washington. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
You have the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 27, 2014 before you. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes as they are presented?
CNN, move for approval.
Second to motion.
Thank you, Mayor-elect. And Mr. Gilli, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along New Salem Highway to Highway Commercial CH District and Residential Multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli.
Second.
Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance changing the date of the city election to coincide with the date of the August general elections beginning in August 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman and Mr. Washington. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance changing the date of the city election to coincide with the date of the August general elections beginning in August 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman and Mr. Washington. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Appendix C, City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Employees Revised Pension Plan, Article X. I guess that's Article 10. Pension Committee, Section 10.01, Committee Members. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, this reflects the council's discussion at our previous meeting, to add a member to the committee who is not in a, who's a rank-and-file member, and so the language reflects that the person should not be an officer or department head. It increases the size of the committee by one for that one position, and believe it is ready for your adoption.
All right, questions of Ms. McGannon?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland.
Second.
And Ms. Harris, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll have an introduction of Ms. Terri Schultz, who is the new executive director of the Rutherford County Area Habitat for Humanity.
Mayor, she had a last-minute cancellation and is going to have to reschedule.
All right, and then we'll move from number seven to number eight, and number item number eight has been withdrawn, so we go to number nine. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by city council on March 13, 2014, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider amending a planned unit development, PUD District, located along Franklin Highway, State Route 96, and to remove approximately 19 acres from the planned unit development, PUD District, and to rezone it as Highway Commercial CH District. Joseph M. Swanson Jr., on behalf of Swanson Development, is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the April 7, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and councilmembers. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider changing the zone for property that's located south of Highway 96, also known as Old Fort Parkway and Franklin Highway. The property is also located west of Rucker Lane, and you can see it on the map before you. The subject area is shaded in two different colors, both orange and blue, and that represents the application request, which is several parts. The first part of the application is for you to consider rezoning approximately a 19-acre tract, which is the area shaded blue, from PUD to CH, Commercial Highway District. The rest of the request is for you to make adjustments to the existing PUD, and that would allow the street network to change to camp... And the reason the street network needs to change is because overall, school, of course, is constructed adjacent to this property, and we're looking at making a connection to that school. Also, the developer's requesting for you to consider amending the minimum lot size requirements for the interior lots of the subdivision. Currently, the program requires that they be 10,000 square feet minimum, and the request is for you to change that to allow them to be 8,000 square feet minimum, and that's the lot size. This property was annexed in 2003, and at that time, a companion zoning change request was presented to you to zone the property to PUD, Planned Unit District. That became known as the Kingdom Ridge PUD, and of course, the Swanson family are the developers of that property. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing to consider these changes for this property, that would be to rezone 19 acres from PUD to CH and to amend the remaining PUD, as outlined in the program book which you've been provided. The Planning Commission had six members present the evening of the public hearing, and all six members recommend unanimously that you adopt these changes. Mr. Steve Steele and Mr. Joe Swanson Jr. are in the audience this evening. I believe Mr. Steele would like to come up and introduce the project himself, and of course, if you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Steele, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Steve Steele with Huddleson Steel Engineering here in Murfreesboro. As Margaret Ann mentioned, this project was begun about 11 years ago in 2014. As Margaret Ann mentioned, this project was begun about 11 years ago in 2003, and I'm here tonight representing Swanson Developments. They began the project, they are still the developers and the builder within the project that we call Kingdom Ridge. In fact, Joe Swanson Jr. is here with me, and he will be able to address comments you all might have later also. There are really three parts to this request. One, we're asking that the interior lots on the undeveloped portion of this property be reduced in minimum size from 10,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet. When this was passed back in 2003, I don't know that this council saw many 8,000-square-foot lots. That was requested initially with this project. So it was determined at that time that the interior lots should be 10,000 square feet. Now, we feel that times have changed, economies have changed, not everybody wants a 10,000-square-foot lot with their home. So Mr. Swanson is wanting to be able to offer some options to people, and again, this is in the interior of the project. On the perimeter, we still have 15,000 square-foot lots, and inside of that, we have 12,000 square-foot lots. And this would not affect the minimum home size or the composition of those homes. It'll be the same good product that I think we've become used to in Kingdom Ridge in the last 11 years. As a result of that change in lot size, we began to look at street patterns, and there have also been some changes in the last 11 years in the area surrounding this. When we initially brought this to you, we had a boulevard, and the boulevard is constructed from Highway 96 into the project. It has a center median, and at the time, we expected it to go all the way through this farm, back to Moreland Lane, and then continue to the south. As that property developed, well, the property to the south has developed, and the road does not continue, so we don't see the need for it to continue in that direction. As Margaret Ann mentioned also, there's a new school being built just to the west of this site. With this new master plan, we've made allowance for a potential connection to that property. Another thing we have to do right now is we have to make allowance for stormwater quality. We didn't have to do that back in 2003. And one of the things that we do, that we use to do that, are we use detention ponds and other methods to improve the quality of the stormwater before it leaves the site. That results frankly in a loss of lots. So when you put that all together for this residential portion, that's why we're here before, asking you to consider our request. On the commercial, of course, Veterans Parkway has developed and has been built in, since we had this approved 11 years ago. There seems to be a major node developing at Veterans in 96. There's other commercial properties zoned out there, and we would like for you to consider taking the commercial property that's within this PUD, out of the PUD, and just zoning it Commercial Highway. That gives us frankly more flexibility to respond to the market. The commercial market changes quite frequently. With a planned development, it's difficult to respond to those kind of changes. We have to come back here before you if we do that, so we're asking your consideration. I'll be glad at the appropriate time to answer any questions or address any issues you would like to ask me about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to a planned unit development, please step forward to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone at all?
Mayor Bragg, I'd like to say a few words.
Good.
Council, staff, Joe Swanson Jr. The...
Address.
1188 Park Avenue.
Thank you.
One of the main reasons that we're trying to get this accomplished is that we have been working with several commercial clients, and there seems to be a hiccup with the POA as it stands and the fees that are associated with it. The larger corporate, if you'd like me to call them district, regional, or even national companies, to have an HOA fee is somewhat cumbersome to them, and it's difficult to navigate around that contractually. So that was one of the major reasons for asking for this. Also, I continue to get more and more inquiries about the sizes of the lots. One thing I want you to feel comfortable with is that the homes that I am building there now, the finishes, the interior next year's will not change. The 8,000-square-foot lots would maintain a minimum 1,400-square-foot homes, just like the 10s have. In fact, we are actually considering some additional amenities inside the homes because the market is asking for them, things like granite countertops and hardwood floors. So I would sincerely appreciate a vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
My name's Glenn Sewell. I live at 5190 Franklin Road, which is right across the street from the Commercial Highway. I'm not for or against. I have some concerns that I'd like to have some answers to as to what type of commercial property, what type of commercial buildings will be there. The reason I ask this is I moved there from Gresham Lane. I moved to Gresham Lane to get out of the main traffic, main street. It was in the country, and there were horses and barns around when I moved there. Napco and some of the other businesses moved in there. They rattled my windows with the boom boxes. We had two or three robberies and some gunfire, gunshots there, and I'm a little concerned about what's going to happen when we get a commercial property across there and what type of businesses we're going to have. Like I said, I'm neither for or against it at this point, so I just like some answers. Excuse me.
All right, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, you have someone else wishing to speak? Please step right up. And give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name's John Strockers, 455 Conquest. I'm neither for nor against, but I was at the previous meeting, and one of the big concerns was traffic. And, excuse me, we're going to have 360 apartments open in our area, and I stood last night and I watched seven cars on Beasley and four coming out of Covenant trying to get across 96, and you just can't do it. And I think, I didn't see it, but there was a serious accident there last night, too. So I really think that traffic needs to be investigated in terms of a stoplight or something in that area, because all of a sudden, we went from a small community to probably 500 more families in there overnight, and there really is, the Moreland exit is cut off now because that won't work, and there's no back entrance, so everybody has to come in and out of two roads. So we heard a lot of comments at the last meeting, but I didn't see any activity from, can we investigate that or do something? So I would appreciate if somebody would look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and I will ask, let's see, what I'll do first is I will ask the council to consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Franklin Highway, State Route 96, and to remove approximately 19 acres from the planned unit development, PUD District, and rezone it as a Highway Commercial CH District. So now that it's under consideration, Ms. Green, do you want to try to address some of those or get some answers of what the city's plans are perhaps for signalization or any other traffic control devices or et cetera?
I'd be glad to. First, or second gentleman who spoke mentioned that he wanted to know the type of buildings that would be allowed here, and currently in the PUD, the types of businesses that would be allowed here are those allowed in the CH District. So the types of buildings that are allowed or uses is not going to change. It's just simply changing the zoning. I believe that we've found that some banks were hesitant to join a venture with something's own planned development, so the uses that are permitted really aren't changing with the zoning. It's just changing the type of zoning, which is to something that is a little bit more understandable to some of the bankers. But there was also questions about traffic and concerns about traffic, and I think the city shares that. We, of course, are concerned, and I included an email from Mr. Balachandra, our city's transportation engineer. Because this came up at the Planning Commission, we wanted to know the status of any signalization, and the letter, he, of course, sent it to Mr. Swanson, but he said, "At the March 5 Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Doug Young asked me to do a preliminary traffic analysis to determine whether the intersection at Old Fort Parkway and Covenant Boulevard/Brinkley Road will meet the warrants for signalization. So Mr. Balachandra said that his preliminary traffic analysis indicates that traffic volumes are close to meeting the volume requirements, and therefore, as such, the city will require a complete traffic signal warrant analysis with the next phase of the project within this development." So we are anticipating a signal there. We expect it to be one. We have been waiting until the warrants would allow that, so to meet the criteria to signalize a state highway. Mr. Balachandra thinks that it's very close to reaching that, so we expect that that'll be coming with the next phase of development, which of course, the timeframe, I can't give you specifically, but when something comes to us, we're certainly going to ask Mr. Swanson to provide us with that study.
Mr. Strockers, it looks like we've got 145 traffic signals now. We'll have 146. Hard to believe that many in the signalized intersections in the city. It's not my fault.[1301.58][1301.58](LAUGHTER). All right. Other questions from council as we consider this on first reading? If not...
Ms. Green.
Excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Smotherman.
In the minutes I'm looking at from the Planning Commission, there was some discussion about the bridge. Is this the appropriate time to discuss that, or is there going to be another point that we might discuss that? My question being, the conversation seems to have taken place that the developer is willing to pay their share of the bridge expense. My question would be, how do we calculate their share?
We, of course, would look at it when we see the plans for that, but we look at the amount of property that they have located along that section. Financially, I think that is probably a better question for Dana Richardson to answer. I don't think he's here. I don't know if Mr. Ray Lott knows how we calculate. I know how we calculate the share of road improvements for sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and the extra lane of traffic, but the bridge, I'm not sure about.
I don't have a definite answer for you. It's really one of something that we'll have to enter into negotiations with Mr. Swanson. There's a variety of implications here. Certainly, the bridge is going to serve more than his development. It's very obvious that it will. There is an element of public good. There's also the timing. There's also other roads that he's obligated to that he may not be expected to perform on, like Moreland Lane. Originally, he was obligated to improve. They'll be put into the mix. Our city manager will be involved with this negotiation. More than likely, we'll come back to the council with a recommendation. It may enter into some sort of a development contract, as we have with other road improvements, where as development occurs, Mr. Swanson pays the city back for a portion of, or a large portion of the development. So I do not have a definite answer on it, but I give you a general idea of how we're going to arrive at it.
Okay. So what we're voting on tonight is not have any implications on the development of the bridge. That will be something that will be addressed later.
Yes, sir. But what it does do, it changes the structure of the planning and development to allow for the street connection. Basically, when we went through the public hearing process, we wanted to find out from the public, were they against the idea of the street connection? If they lived in the PUD and felt very strongly that there should be no street connection, well, that would probably have caused us to look at a different recommendation from the Planning Commission. On the other hand, we found that the public was very interested in improved traffic. We feel that a east-to-west connection to Veterans Parkway and also a connection to the new school without requiring all traffic to enter onto Highway 96 would be beneficial to the traffic conditions. So we passed the public test. Is the street connection wanted? Well, it's not not wanted. We know that because we heard nobody opposing the street connection, and we were very careful to vet that issue during the process. And Mr. Swanson also met with the Owners Association to make sure they understood that was a part of this plan.
I'm just thinking back on when we were developing the school. I was encouraging us to build this bridge at that time, and certainly, I couldn't get it included with the package, and so I was disappointed that it didn't get built then, but I'm encouraged by the fact that we do need the bridge. I mean, there's no doubt that we, the neighborhood needs to be connected to the school, and it may even reduce some of the traffic that we're seeing going out onto Highway 96, because, I mean, if they cut through to the school, they're not going to exit the neighborhood to go around to the school. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not going in and developing the property as such for any developer from the perspective of, I don't know that it's the city's responsibility to go in and build the bridge. I don't know that it's, you know, to go in and put infrastructure and develop the property. And this is, being Mr. Swanson owns the property on both sides of the bridge, this does appear to be on his property. So that's just my concern.
Other questions or comments? If not, you have your ordinance before you on first reading.
No other questions, Mayor. I move for passage on first reading.
Second.
Mr. Gilli, Vice Mayor Washington, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 13, 2014, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 1.4 acres located along Mercury Boulevard from Local Commercial CL District to Highway Commercial CH District. Mr. Kevin McKnight is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the April 7, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning property that's approximately 1.4 acres from its current CL District, which is Local Commercial District, to CH, and that's Commercial Highway District. This property is located at 903 Mercury Boulevard, so that's north of Mercury Boulevard or Highway 70. It's also located adjacent to First Avenue and south of Minor Street. The property is located across Mercury Boulevard, or Zoned CH, and that's Commercial Highway District, and they're developed with a shopping center. The property that's immediately to the east is Zoned RS10, and that's Single Family Residential District, and it's developed with single-family homes. Property to the west is Zoned RD, and that's Residential Duplex, and is part of the city's property that we own for the Murfreesboro Housing Authority. The property to the north is Zoned RS8, and across Minor Street, our property is developed with single-family homes. This property is developed with a commercial center, and I've included some photos, and I'll scan to those, of the commercial center in your PDF. The property's been there for several years. As a matter of fact, it was developed before the current zoning became effective in 1984. When we adopted our current zoning, the property was Zoned CL, Local Commercial District. Before then, it was Zoned B1, which is roughly the equivalent of the CH District. The owner of this property, they've come before you to ask you to change the zoning to CH because they'd like to use the existing building for some uses that are not permitted in the CL District. I do want to note that this property is also located in the CCO, or Commercial Core Overlay District. The CCO doesn't affect the use of the property either way, but I did want to point out that it does have the overlay district. So they want to use the property for automotive repair, and that's not permitted in the CL District. The Planning Commission considered the matter and weighed their options, one of which would be to amend the CL Zone to allow those types of uses that Mr. McKnight would like to have here. They did not want to do that, and instead are just recommending that this one parcel, 1.4 acres, be rezoned from CL to CH. Their recommendation is coming to you unanimously. They've all, all six members present that evening did decide that they would like for this property to be Zoned CH. Mr. Kevin McKnight is here in the audience, and I believe he'd like to come up and say a few things about the property and his plans, after which you should conduct a public hearing. If you have any questions, again, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.[1780.32]
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 13th, 2014, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 4.1 acres located south of Salem Highway, State Route 99, from Single Family Residential 12, RS12 District, to Residential Multifamily 16, RM16 District. Old South Properties Incorporated is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the April 7th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning property that's approximately 1.4 acres from its current CL District, which is local commercial district, to CH, and that's Commercial Highway District. This property is located at 903 Mercury Boulevard, so that's north of Mercury Boulevard or Highway 70. It's also located adjacent to First Avenue and south of Minor Street. The property is located across Mercury Boulevard, or Zoned CH, and that's Commercial Highway District, and they're developed with a shopping center. The property that's immediately to the east is Zoned RS10, and that's Single Family Residential District, and it's developed with single-family homes. Property to the west is Zoned RD, and that's Residential Duplex, and is part of the city's property that we own for the Murfreesboro Housing Authority. The property to the north is Zoned RS8, and across Minor Street, our property is developed with single-family homes. This property is developed with a commercial center, and I've included some photos, and I'll scan to those, of the commercial center in your PDF. The property has been there for several years. As a matter of fact, it was developed before the current zoning became effective in 1984. When we adopted our current zoning, the property was Zoned CL, Local Commercial District. Before then, it was Zoned B1, which is roughly the equivalent of the CH District. The owner of this property, they've come before you to ask you to change the zoning to CH because they'd like to use the existing building for some uses that are not permitted in the CL District. I do want to note that this property is also located in the CCO, or Commercial Core Overlay District. The CCO doesn't affect the use of the property either way, but I did want to point out that it does have the overlay district. So they want to use the property for automotive repair, and that's not permitted in the CL District. The Planning Commission considered the matter and weighed their options, one of which would be to amend the CL zone to allow those types of uses that Mr. McKnight would like to have here. They did not want to do that and instead are just recommending that this one parcel, 1.4 acres, be rezoned from CL to CH. Their recommendation is coming to unanimously. They've all... all six members present that evening did decide that they would like for this property to be Zoned CH. Mr. Kevin McKnight is here in the audience, and I believe he'd like to come up and say a few things about the property and his plans, after which you should conduct a public hearing. If you have any questions, again, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm Kevin McKnight, and very briefly, I just want to say that we're seeking a rezoning that would allow automotive repair at this property, that have a vacant portion of it that is ideally suited for that purpose, and we've had interest in a tenant maybe leasing this for automotive repair, so that's why we're asking for the rezoning. Have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them. If you have any questions, I'd add before or after the public hearing, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend this zoning change to be approved.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Green before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against during this my last public hearing? Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Oh, come on. All right. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located south of Salem Highway, State Route 99, to Residential Multifamily 16, RM16 District.
Mayor, I just have a quick question.
Mr. McFarland?
I was out at Innsbruck Commons, meeting with Mr. Cromley, a resident, and how nice it was out there. I mean, the subdivision was immaculate, and I think that's what the pictures we saw. But, Mr. Cromley, you know, the question I'm going to ask, will these be private or public streets?
That I do not know. This is proposed as a public or private.
These will be private streets maintained by the property owners, HOA.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Young?
Ms. Green, will the trash pickup be with a compactor provided by the developer and the homeowners association?
A commercial hauler will provide the solid waste service to this property. If it exceeds 75 units, they are required to use a compactor; otherwise, they can use a dumpster.
Thank you.
City will not provide services, solid waste services.
All right. Anything else? If there are no other questions, you have this ordinance on first reading. What are your wishes? Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Gilli, thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider rezoning along Warrior Drive, RM16, Casin Lane, OGR, Garcia Boulevard, RS10, Annex Ocean zoning, CH, along Old Ford Parkway, Franklin Road, and rezoning along Wilkinson Pike, MU. Mr. Aylott, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During its meeting on April 2nd of 2014, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings on the items that you've just read. They recommend your approval of all of these items. They need to be scheduled for public hearings.
Ms. McGannon?
May 22nd.
Council members, does May 22nd meet your approval?
Ms. Aylott, is that too many public hearings in one night?
Considering the degree of public participation in these items, I would not think that it would be. We were able to cover these with a very lengthy meeting at the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Move for a motion. Move we set a public hearing, the... May the 27th?
Second.
22nd.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is your second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to State Treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, we do this every year to have the funds that have not been taken after being advertised by the state back into our coffers, and if claims are still made, we will reimburse those monies at that time.
All right. Council members, you have this resolution. Any questions regarding it?
Melissa, it's about just under $2,400.
It's a small amount.
Small amount.
Well, that's what we think we have.
Right, but that's what they estimated.
Right. It may be... that's what we turned in, but it may be less than that now.
Okay. Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor-elect.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to State Treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, we do this every year to have the funds that have not been taken after being advertised by the state back into our coffers, and if claims are still made, we will reimburse those monies at that time.
All right. Council members, you have this resolution. Any questions regarding it?
Melissa, it's about just under $2,400.
It's a small amount.
Small amount.
Well, that's what we think we have.
Right, but that's what they estimated.
Right. It may be... that's what we turned in, but it may be less than that now.
Okay. Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor-elect.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. We'll consider for adoption now a resolution regarding Mutual Aid and Emergency and Disaster Agreement Act of 2004, and a resolution. Mr. Lyons?
Mayor Bragg, this is going to be an expansion of the personnel who are allowed to approve mutual aid responses. Currently, regulations give the fire chief and the deputy fire chief the ability to respond to another jurisdiction when there's a state of emergency, and only the fire chief when there is not a state of emergency or a formal declaration. What we're finding is there are situations where we would like to respond and assist a volunteer fire department in Rutherford County or another jurisdiction in Rutherford County, and they may not be available. It may be happening in the evening hours or on the weekends. So what this resolution will do is authorize the deputy chief, assistant chief of operations, or the on-duty shift commander to provide emergency assistance, including fire suppression assistance, rescue assistance, or special operations, to Rutherford County jurisdictions or a volunteer fire department in Rutherford County.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Lyons, you mentioned Rutherford County about three times there. Should there be a fire in Cannon County, like happened in Woodbury not long ago, will we not cross county lines and go to Woodbury?
It would be the chief or deputy chief.
Yeah, the chief or deputy chief could make that call.
Okay.
So he would have the authority to make that call.
So this would only be Rutherford County?
Yes, sir.
Good question. Anything else?
Mr. Lyons, we have a grant, or I can't remember what it was, that we received several years ago where it's a mutual aid, and that's for equipment for all... some of our local municipalities. Is that correct, Ms. McGannon?
I don't remember the terms of that grant. I know this isn't motivated by that. Nothing in any grant terms would require it or prohibit it.
Okay.
Other questions?
Good Neighbor Act.
Move for approval.
Second. Thank you, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the assistance to the city manager with regards to the state grant for Innovate Medical, and consider for adoption a resolution in support of an application for Fast Track Economic Development Program funds for Innovate Medical. Ms. Logan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. And the reason I'm here before you tonight is to ask for your authorization and approval for the city to work with the state economic development department as we look to try to bring in another grant for Innovate Medical. As you may know, they recently announced their relocation of their North American headquarters to Murfreesboro, as well as in addition, an expansion prepared or planned for 1152 Park Avenue. The state of Tennessee has offered them a Fast Track grant, and we would act as the pass-through agents, and the city of Murfreesboro staff would act as grant administrators in offering grant support. And so we are here tonight to ask you to authorize us to do that, and also to authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign any and all necessary contracts and certifications that come along with this grant contract. The state funding board will meet on this item on May the 6th. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have concerning this item.
Any questions?
I have a... yes, sir.
Mr. Young?
My understanding is they are moving their national headquarters to Murfreesboro.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
From Michigan?
That is correct. Yes, they have decided to close their facility in Michigan and bring that in down to Murfreesboro and consolidate with their Murfreesboro facility. And this was part of... this is something that the state has worked very hard on as part of this grant package.
Is there 400 jobs, is it?
Over five years, they're expected to have 410 jobs, is the estimate that we've been provided.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we need two votes or one?
One, to adopt the resolution.
Just one on the... to adopt the resolution. All right. Is there a motion, and we adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Second motion.
Mr. Gilli, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Information Technology Director with regards to ERP, E-R-P, software solution selection. Mr. Lilly, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, first I'd like to say it's been an honor serving under you, Mayor. I appreciate and respect being your last agenda item of the night, or of your career. I've often said to you that you should go into comedy, so I guess now you can pursue that interest.
All right. Thanks. I'm looking forward to that.
As you can see in our key applications functionality rating, the top three rated as critical were our finance program, our human resource program, and also our courts program. They're running on an application, on the backbone of a technology that is actually over 20 years old, and there is a need to replace that. That came in as high priority. The technology that it's running on is called COBOL. It's running our finance and payroll applications, and it's not capable of meeting the city's needs of reporting, and several different areas, I listed 10 here, so, and we can go on. So that became very crucial that we replaced that, and that that become our first phase of replacement for the city. There were several low-hanging fruit that were identified that we have replaced during this time, this transition, this planning time. One of them being the Intranet, which we will be showcasing tomorrow, the city website that, we wrote that out last year, other social media that we're using, Twitter, Facebook, and we have a couple YouTube channels. Also AVL with our Rover bus system with some of our solid waste equipment, some of our solid waste vehicles, where we've installed this automated vehicle location system so that we can be efficient in our, as we move throughout the city. So, where are we now? A selection committee was formed, consisting of representatives from finance, human resources, city court, water and sewer, police, fire, and information technology. Led by the fine project management leadership of Aaron Tucker, we were able to go through our plan, define, and design approach so that we could, we could put out competitive CL proposals, put business needs together, and make sure that we had the right companies so that we could review and figure out where we'd go in this first phase. Kind of show you a picture. This is that group at the city of Clarksville as we reviewed software. We did several, several calls with other cities. We've done web meetings with other cities, live video, and with Clarksville being just down the road, we did do a day-long assessment of some of the software. As you can see here, our program schedule, we are right on schedule. We've done our plan and defined, and now what we're ready to do while we're here tonight is we come to you with a proposal. The IT director, along with the selection committee, recommends that the city council approve the purchase of Munis and Kronos software to replace the more than 20-year-old COBOL system base presently in use. Cost of these two software products, including installation, is 1.8 million, 999,500 dollars, with the general fund responsible for 1.2 million, 32,700 dollars, and the water and sewer fund, the remaining 666,800 dollars. Funding for the software purchase is included in the 2014 debt issue and the water and sewer fund capital reserves. I open for any questions.
That's quite a recommendation, Mr. O. Appreciate your persistence in getting that done, getting that up. Clarksville and spending some time with those folks, do they have exactly what you're purchasing?
We are actually purchasing more than what they have. We were able to see from city of Clarksville's implementation, the good, the bad, what to do, what not to do. They do have the ERP portion of it. They did not have the Kronos portion of it, which would be our payroll portion and workforce management. So we did meet with other cities, including city of Vicksburg, to review those processes and applications.
And Mayor, I might add, these two software programs are game changers for us. It is that critical to our day-to-day work in terms of how we're able to track our finances. While Ms. Wright can tell you where every single penny is, the reporting that we can get out of this is going to be a substantial improvement over where we're at. On the human resource side, in terms of how we manage payroll, track vacation, and overtime, this is a game changer for us. So I really want to compliment the team that worked on this because we have done a tremendous amount of research and investigation to make sure we were bringing you the very best recommendation we could, and I really wanted to emphasize how important this decision is.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Lilly or staff? Yes, sir, Mr. Washington.
Does the payroll process, were you talking about electronic time entry?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Right now, we're paper, and we're looking at converting to electronic.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
There's no other question, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Harris, Vice Mayor Washington, thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Ms. Harris?
And Vice Mayor Washington, thank you.
Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the assistance to the city manager with regards to the state grant for Innovate Medical, and consider for adoption a resolution in support of an application for Fast Track Economic Development Program funds for Innovate Medical. Ms. Logan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. And the reason I'm here before you tonight is to ask for your authorization and approval for the city to work with the state economic development department as we look to try to bring in another grant for Innovate Medical. As you may know, they recently announced their relocation of their North American headquarters to Murfreesboro, as well as in addition, an expansion prepared or planned for 1152 Park Avenue. The state of Tennessee has offered them a Fast Track grant, and we would act as the pass-through agents, and the city of Murfreesboro staff would act as grant administrators in offering grant support. And so we are here tonight to ask you to authorize us to do that, and also to authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign any and all necessary contracts and certifications that come along with this grant contract. The state funding board will meet on this item on May the 6th. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have concerning this item.
Any questions?
I have a, yes, sir.
Mr. Young.
My understanding is they are moving their national headquarters to Murfreesboro.
That's correct, yes, sir.
From Michigan?
That is correct, yes. They have decided to close their facility in Michigan and bring that in down to Murfreesboro and consolidate with their Murfreesboro facility, and this was part of, this is something that the state has worked very hard on as part of this grant package.
Is there 400 jobs, is that?
Over five years, they're expected to have 410 jobs is the estimate that we've been provided.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we need two votes or one?
One, to adopt the resolution.
Just one on the, to adopt the resolution. All right, is there a motion, then we adopt the resolution?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Second motion.
Mr. Gillie, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have a statements to be considered for payment before you, are there any questions regarding any of those items, or are you ready for a motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Mayor, I believe this might be the last opportunity for someone who always loves to pay the bills, and I think we ought to give him full opportunity to make that decision tonight, whether we should do it.
I'm ready to pay the bills.
No more motions for you, Mr. McFarland.
I'll second that motion.
And Mr. Gillie, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I have received a letter from the Murfreesboro Housing Authority recommending that Betty Hord be named as a replacement on their board, replacing Mr. John Jones, whose commission has, will expire next week. So I make that recommendation, Betty Hord replacing John Jones on the Murfreesboro Housing Authority Board.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Is there other business from staff or city council to come before the council? If not, it is.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Young.
I would like to say what a wonderful opportunity it has been to serve with you. I was elected in 2012 with you. You have given us leadership, a high bar to maintain, and your wife out there in the audience has pushed you along to make all this happen. So I would like to say not goodbye, but we'll see you around.
Thank you, Mr. Young. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to also thank you for the 12 years of service you've given the city.